Sometimes we don't have classroom teachers or sometimes pairs are out. So other people are having to fill coverage, so they're needing that too. So Benel has asked for two. Molly Stark has asked for three. And then a couple of bullets down, Poundle actually asked for one as well. So although SBSU has not met yet, I do have those six positions built into that budget and they're roughly about thirty-seven thousand dollars apiece, the full benefits. Again, these are brand new positions. If they maybe don't know what folks are going to elect for benefits, but that would be kind of the top of the line that we would see for those positions. Another request was just a transition of vacant classroom teacher at Molly Stark to a designated reading teacher. I swept on that in this budget and it ends up being budget neutral. The next bullet down is also for Molly Stark and Donna Beasley asked to actually increase her specials teacher, so everyone of them is at a 1.0 FTE. Presently, she has two of her staff going to Woodford. So this, of course, is going to put Woodford in a little bit of a predicament because if she's pulling back her specials to stay in her building full-time. They're still budgeted money at the Woodford level for those needed specials. We just have to find people to do it. So we do have other folks that are not 1.0 within the district that we could approach. Some of them may or may not be willing to actually take on an increase in their FTE to fill that, but the budget's there if we can find the people to do it. So just wanted to mention that. At Monument, Donna's Holly asked to add a social worker position for her school dedicated specifically to that building. And then both Poundle and Shappsberry with their first year of having assistant principals split between the two buildings really would like to have a dedicated assistant principal on each of those campuses. So I had incorporated that into this budget as well. So essentially taking Sarah Case, she would probably go to one or the other and then we would have to hire another 1.0 assistant principal. And then the final position add was for a math teacher at Shappsberry. And if you recall, it was last year, no, actually, I think it's been a couple of years now, we did add a math teacher. And Jeff explained that that teacher is serving grades K to two exclusively. So he really would like to have a dedicated teacher to serve grades three through six. So that has also been incorporated into this budget. And I also put a note on there, just at the bottom of this meeting, that our ESTER-funded positions will be, that money will be concluded at the end of next fiscal. So potentially next year, you're going to be seeing asks in the budget for any continuation of positions that administrators feel are important. Thank you.
I have a question about the math teacher. What do you mean by a math teacher? Like a math coach? Like, because aren't they grade level teachers?
But I think they're trying to do specific instructions. So based on his data, he has goals set for growth. And the classroom teachers are able to do so much, right? But then to have an actual additional teacher to be there to support, to help those learners that might not be able to be.
I think he had a math teacher at that point.
He does. He has one serving low. And it's different than.
Do the other schools have the same thing?
Some of them have interventionists that are funded, your CFP. The CFP, the Consolidated Federal Programs Title Grant.
We can ask Jeff to appear at a subjectively meeting to explain to Lloyd what his quest is.
I would just be.
So the preliminary meeting, we didn't ask them.
Yeah, I would just be curious of why one school would need it versus the other.
So those, the interventionists are driven, that money is basically allocated on poverty. So the schools that don't have as high a poverty level don't have the funding to have those educators.
So they're called interventionists at one school, but then they're called a math teacher at another, but they basically do the same thing?
Interventionists that are specific to title and providing tiered instruction. So I think tier two.
Yeah.
This is more tier one instruction is what he's asking for.
So since they're just asking questions, how would a schedule look? And what is the regular education teacher doing while this interventionist or math coach or?
I don't think we're going to probably be able to answer that.
Yeah, I think Jeff.
Yeah. I would just be curious. I just, I don't know, I'm finding it a little big. I feel like there might be an equity issue there.
We have a couple of schools that have reading teachers. So you can see that Molly has asked to add one as well. We do have a couple. As the grant money kind of receives, they're feeling the impact of that in their schools, essentially. That's where requests are coming from.
So Jim, if Jeff didn't have to leave Shappsberry, would that help his situation with his assistant Instead of Poundle?
I think he would still want a full-time vice principal. Schools have changed. Impact's changed.
Because I don't think either school has hit that targeted, what is the target by law? Is it two fifty students, two seventy?
Not aware of that.
I can't remember.
There's a hard number. Which side is Jeff spelling it? I don't know. I don't want to speculate. I'm going to say seven times, some week maybe, well, maybe once. I'm pretty sure he was up there one day a week, but not for the full day. But I can fit that in as forty. We do have this path every time, so.
On the ESTER-funded positions. Are those the ones that are above? That's why they want them to be now part of the funding, the general funding?
They are not included in this budget because they will be included in the grant again for next year. So I just want everyone to be aware that these are asks for this year and there may be even more next year because of that funding going away. They include the family engagement specialists, therapists, PCBA's. We have the pre-KK social emotional coaches as well.
And just curious, are the enrollment overall increased, decreased, staying the same?
The numbers that they died through COVID and are starting to come back up now. Particularly Poundle, I know she said she saw a pretty sharp increase this year with, I think, a ten percent increase in her student body.
So are they actually COVID members or?
I would say not pre-COVID, yes. These are questions we wouldn't, the answers we wouldn't necessarily have sitting at this meeting.
Yeah, I'm just throwing them out because it's the first meeting.
It's on my screen. I have a lot more stuff that's not showing up there, so I'm trying to move it so I can.
So Poundle, you think maybe a ten percent increase, maybe they're pre-COVID or almost pre-COVID?
Two nineteen at last year, this time they're two thirty-five this year. That's only a two, I can't, I'm running a two-year comparison, that wouldn't be pre-COVID.
And how many sixth graders? I was looking for my enrollment sheet to see what they had for sixth graders.
For Poundle? It was twenty-six from twenty-one, up from twenty-one.
So those sixth graders born in middle school and then kindergarten has?
About four, thirty-four. Sixth graders aren't necessarily going.
For me?
For Poundle?
Four would go.
This day.
No, sixth graders.
Current year's sixth graders.
I thought it was going to be up to seventh grade next year.
So that's why I'm just wondering what Poundle's word.
That looks like the largest jump are the current year fifth graders who are going to be going into sixth grade next year, twenty-eight to thirty-seven.
They're only asking for one pair of positions? So they feel comfortable here and then half of an assistant principal?
So the next category is the benefits that are associated with all of the positions that are covered in the salaries. The health and dental rates have not been set yet, although they have been proposed. So the Department of Federal Regulation is currently reviewing what the Vermont Education Health Initiative has submitted. And that's what I have across here, the VHI rates for health insurance. They've proposed twelve percent increase across the board, except for the plan that most people are enrolled in, increase of twelve point seven percent premium for next year on that. And I have not seen these rates actually go down after DFR, Department of Federal Regulation actually reduce them. They normally stick. So that's probably what we're looking at for next year. With the statewide negotiation, one factor that I can take into effect is the support personnel. Each calendar year, they continue to have a one percent increase in the amount of premium they have to contribute until they get to that twenty percent. So each year I'm notching that down on the employer side, so we factored that in again for next year. Benefits for the proposed position, new positions have been incorporated. We know that the Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System will be having another rate increase of a quarter of a percent, so those have been factored in. I reached out to the Office of the Treasurer the other day to see if they have set the rates yet for the new teacher healthcare assessment that has not come out yet. But it is currently one thousand four hundred two dollars for this fiscal year that we pay for any teacher that is new to the teacher retirement system as of July one of fifteen. So that's an annual fee we pay for them. In addition to these people that are new to teacher retirement, they pay an extra percent into the system as well. So those teachers that were grandfathered in are only paying five or six, those new teachers, in addition to the employer paying this as well. And the dental rates, they have said they're probably going to be between zero and four percent. So I've thought in this budget right now, too, they have been flat for the past two years. But I know that we did have a benefit expansion to our support personnel, so I don't know if that's going to have any impact on our premiums for next year. So that contributes to the increase we're seeing there. And then our next category is contracted services. So those positions, you know, that may be vacant and/or services that we can't fulfill with our own staff, we end up doing via contract. So we do have Janotronics that supports our janitorial services at the Bennington Elementary Schools. That, we're still within the allowable increase of that contract by statute. But I have been working with Holly. I don't know if she's going to want to take that out to market to rebid it again for next year, but I have factored in a potential increase for that. We do have, you know, service contracts for heating and cooling systems. We typically see an increase with those, so those have been factored in to that line. We have been seeing an increase in mental health services for our students. So I did have administrators ask to make sure that there's enough funding in there for the additional contracts that we may see with the United Counseling Service or some doctors that are serving our students. So I have factored that into the contracted service line as well.
You still have open positions in that area too, right? This accounts for filling, filled position.
As far as the clinicians go, I don't think we have clinician positions at the elementary level. We have them at the secondary level. What I see more at this level is the behaviorists.
There's an open, there's an open position for a BCBA. That's not filled.
That one's, I think, funded through ESTER right now too.
This brings up three of those.
Yes.
Elementary level, three, yeah.
Also in this line, there have been a few instances we've seen where students either being dysregulated or for reasons not being able to gain their education in school, so they're in another setting. So we have tutoring services, non-IEP, so that ends up coming to the district level for compensation. So we have that factored in as well. And we have been working, seeing more and more use of the tutorial center here locally for our younger students as well.
And is that covered under the ESTER grant or any of that funding that Laura shared with us last spring?
We do have tutoring services in there, but that is for supplement and recovery. This is actually just for basically the kids that aren't actually able to even be in school for that person.
Because of self-regulation or?
Very, very.
Just very.
And then one thing I do have noted in italics here is the amount of money that we've had budgeted annually for the school resource officers. And this year, unfortunately, we only have one position filled right now, not some Shappsberry. We lost one of the other deputies from the Bennington County Sheriff's Office that was serving the role in Poundle. They have said that they are looking to fill it.
In our meeting today with the town, they think that they can fill the second one, but.
So they, money remains there.
That I'm aware of, the board wants to go on.
I feel like you swirl this topic around.
Yeah, the topic I got pushed up because the positions weren't filled, right? And that was my response in my meeting today with the town. Before I could support that, you know, form position, I think the board should be busy
So I did not make any adjustment to that line in particular, just knowing that the Bennington Police Department is short-staffed, so I doubt we're going to be able to get any resources from them. The Bennington County Sheriff's Department's a different story, however. So that is what is in that line. So line number four, operations. That is kind of the nuts and bolts of everything that's happening in our building. So it's our utilities, repairs, and maintenance. This would be our insurance premiums for liability and kind of, you know, everything from postage to printing, our copier lease expenses, all that kind of rolled into this one category here. I have been trying to reallocate from, as we, we're getting better with this every year, the new uniform chart of accounts and trying to put the money where it needs to be at the outset of the year. We oftentimes have needs occur through the year where folks in the buildings have to reach out and say, hey, this money is in this account, but we really need to spend it out of this account, so can you do a budget transfer? So as Alice and I have been working through this, we're trying to reallocate. So you'll see somebody, numbers are kind of flipping between either functions or the budget category. So again, we're just trying to continue to implement that, to put the money where it needs to be to eliminate or at least reduce the number of budget transfer requests that are coming in. Of course, you all probably are well aware what's happening with gas prices and fuel oil prices, so we are under budgeted, unfortunately, this year because we didn't obviously know at this point last year what was going to happen. So our facilities folks have, of course, asked to make sure that we've got those expenses covered for next year. And as with everything else, we're seeing our insurance premiums are forecasted to jump as well, so we're factoring that in as well. Holly has been working with the facilities folks and trying to identify some projects for next year. So just a random kind of sampling, bathrooms, restrooms tend to be a common theme amongst a lot of the campuses. Clock and bell system upgrades, painting, flooring, researches, working with them to kind of allocate funds and identify what they can try to chip away through the course of the next year. So those have been factored in as well.
It seems general, like you haven't actually gone out, you're just kind of placing? I'm sorry? It seems like a general list, like it isn't, like somebody said, I definitely, I need floor in the library or they do, I just haven't gone to that level.
Holly, Holly is toward every building with the first schools.
So all of these are specific to a room or a situation in each of the schools? So in that, in the Woodford, in this paving improvements, would that be the driveway that the town owns or would that be?
That's the one thing that Melissa keeps asking for, right? And we still have not resolved how we're going to handle it. An improvement to a piece of property that we don't own.
The select board is not ready. I think I've talked to them a dozen times. They're really not interested in even considering it. So it's there as a placeholder as much as anything else, but it's.
So then patching.
Yeah. And the patches are good, but it's. Can we explain that the playground is owned by the school district or something?
The playground, I thought, was owned, but the driveway is not, but only the driveway that goes through the door, the other one is owned by the school.
We're not even sure of that. So, and that was a concern for the playground, not to stretch this out, but that was a concern for the playground, if a kid got hurt in the playground. It's the town's liability, we think.
Well, it's what currently, I'll go slip and fall in the driveway, we'll see how quickly to get the town Woodford aside over that side to the school district.
I'll come video.
So transportation is the next category. This would be what you're seeing here, what's locally budgeted for. There's transportation for band activities, for field trips, for extra runs after school of that nature, so that's the budget here. The actual transportation to and from school is at the SU level, so that ends up showing up in the assessments. We are going updated on that this year, so I have factored that in. However, the SU budget has not been presented or the assessments have not been updated yet, so those are flat since we get down to that point. But I did level fund everything else in here. And that line number six, tuition, I keep that in here because you will see some actual expenses for FY twenty-three. I haven't put a budget in for twenty-four with the expectation that we probably will have breakage elsewhere to cover if we do have situations continuing that we're seeing now. I just had student support services come to me today to ask if we have funding to be able to send another learner out of district. Some of these are non-IEP runners, so it wouldn't be an out-of-district cost at the SU level, it's an out-of-district cost at the district level, not the SU level. It's hard to say, right? I don't know the situations of the students, but if the team has determined what's best for them, things could change, other things could happen with other students. So it's kind of up in the air at this point. And I also feel like we have a budgeted contingency every year, but worst-case scenario, if everything else we spend, we still have that money there. So if we did have some students that it was found to be in the best interest of them and their education to be going out of district, we could tap into those funds if we need to. So that is why I have not budgeted there, but we do have current expenses for out-of-district tuition.
Is that a short-term thing? Is that what they're anticipating?
I just do the numbers. From my understanding, it's always the goal to have their students in their home school, but somewhere just at a point of dysregulation or whatever the case may be, but they're just better served someplace always.
Thank you.
And, you know, schools that are equipped to handle and support their needs. So number seven is supplies. So this is not just for classroom supplies, this would also encompassing supplies at the facilities level. So we are paper towels and toilet tissue and tools and equipment that we need to keep the mowers running and things of that nature. So we have factored those in.
Is it an increase because of the price of things?
I'm still trying to actually reallocate. There have been a lot of funds that continue to be at the equipment level. For something to be accounted for as equipment, it has to be, have singular value, per unit value of at least five thousand dollars and a useful life of more than one year. So, you know, people think of this as it's equipment, right? But technically, it's a supply. So as, you know, I'm going through these budgets line by line, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. So as I see them, like, well, if we only have thirty-five hundred dollars there, we're never going to spend that out of that line. I might as well just throw it up in the tech supply line or just general supplies. So that's what we're doing there. There are some pieces of equipment, though. The cafeteria tables, we're still trying to rework those. Molly Stark is the one that has more tables slated for replacement for next year. So that's what I think we had, it's probably close to twenty thousand dollars for those tables for next year, but with only an increase of eleven. That's because I've reallocated money up to the supply line. Oh, but yes, but as far as expenses go, yeah, I mean, more expensive, paper towels and cleaners and everything, so, yes. Let's see. Dews and fees are next, and that's a small reduction, just based on what I've seen for the past couple of years, what we have historically spent for the last three years. It felt like I could knit that down just a little bit.
Nothing ever goes down. What is it, church?
I know, and it's the smallest one.
Yeah.
However, if you add an additional principal, half and half, you're going to increase the dues, so that might actually break even on that one, so. The assessments are still to be determined. However, I did just take the liberty of throwing that thirty-seven thousand dollars times six for those position requested para, so that's that increase there. Our debt payment, one of the energy improvements for the SD schools, as we continue to. as we continue to work the principal payments down, the interest, scheduled interest payments also are reduced. So that's what our payment will be for next year. There's also a factor in here for short term borrowing, so not that whole four hundred thousand dollars. It's an exclusive we also have George of it is for the energy project. And then contingency, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, that has just kind of been there. That's also coupled with some miscellaneous that unfortunately with the new chart of accounts, miscellaneous and contingency have the same account number. So that's why you're seeing some small dollar figures there in the actual columns. Those are not because we actually had to dive into that two hundred and ten thousand dollars. It's just things that came up that weren't a fee, they weren't a supply, it wasn't a contracted service. It truly was the best place to put it was miscellaneous. And then the transfers of a hundred and thirty, that would be the transfers to capital reserve accounts. And I did include on on the narrative what those current balances are. Bennington, a hundred fifty seven thousand, Powell, two sixty six, Shaftesbury, almost one ninety seven. Woodford's general reserve, which is not restricted specifically to capital. It's a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty. And then we have had two years of this one hundred and thirty thousand dollar contribution to the SVU ESD, so that would be available for the board to decide to use on any campus. Whereas the other individuals are specifically for those campuses.
Where does that money come from, the hundred and thirty and the hundred and thirty?
Those are, they're budgeted expenses. So these have been amounts that have been budgeted over the years that have been going into reserve accounts for Powell and Bennington.
Oh, got it.
You want to record for years as voted to enter the reserve, enter the reserve in case we need to improve or.
I remember that, but she said.
But before the consolidation is ours, sort of. Borrowing a gift.
So as 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 we move forward, does it make sense to move down those reserve funds for the buildings as those buildings need to have their facilities taken care of?
I would think for the bigger jobs, yes. So we did have a roof repair at Monmouth a couple of years ago that we used that money for. Some of the HVAC work that started at the outset, actually, it was started before COVID. At Shaftesbury and even Powell, we've been spending down those funds for those real big infrastructure.
Especially the Ch- Shaftesbury.
Yeah. Is that a law, is that a goal to get them down so that we have just the SVU ESD?
That is.
Not a goal that we, I don't know that we've ever specifically taken action to spend what's SVU ESD versus what's, you know, Shaftesbury, Woodford, I don't know if we've ever made that decision specifically by the time, I mean, just, I mean, it's, it looks like it's about a million dollars in combined, in which would take a nice, I don't think we should say, no, but it would take a nice chunk out of the operations budget.
Seems like it's a way to help the facilities of the buildings.
Yep.
You know, Woodford's major expense has been the pitch field essentially. You've got some other ones coming up with roof and and painting, but those don't really meet that level.
Right.
And and the blackout is never going to get resolved because they don't want it resolved. So, you know, if we had, if we reduced it by, I don't know, seventy five percent, we'd still have a reasonable fund in Woodford for painting and roofing. Just a thought.
So I am happy to to go through the other breakdown if you want me to, but you know, most of you have been through this with me a couple of times. No, it's, you know, it's the same information, just kind of spliced and placed another way. But I know what you really want to see is probably the other stuff, so. We are working on budgeting our revenue right now. With the newer school districts, Arlington and Sandgate, there are a lot more students. Tuitioning issues incoming and outgoing. So when we look at that, we'll be factoring in the students from North Bennington for our tuition charges here. A real quick look at fund balance. So this is what we have coming out of FY twenty two. So we know last year, the fund balance we had was coming out of FY twenty one, which was really a big COVID impact year, right? And schools just did not operate the way that we had intended or planned for them to. So that's why our fund balance was so much bigger last year. We probably will see a a pretty good sized fund balance going forward, coming out of twenty three. But just looking at what we had for revenues and offsetting expenses for FY twenty two, we were still ahead, but a fund balance is about seven hundred thousand dollars. Again, my team's working on that along with the teachers who were here last week, weeks or months. So they're they're working on final because we're going to be too hot it's too, but that's just my kind of ballpark estimate. So as we always look at this line here, the General State Support Grant, this is the demand that we're putting on the education fund. Pretty significant increase again because of what we're seeing, the reduction of the fund balance. However, the Tax Commissioner came out with their December first letter. And they are forecasting over sixty million dollar surplus in the education fund. So based on that, with a forecasted increase of education spending of over eight percent. So we're a little bit above that at this point. They put that letter out with the property yield increasing again over what it was for this current year. Surprisingly enough, I got equalized pupils Sunday afternoon, so I updated that. We have seen a reduction in a number of these again, but it's a two year average. And I have our data team actually reviewing those just to make sure that the numbers that the agency have actively been given back to us are based on the numbers that we actually provided to them. So with our equalized pupils and the data you have here, and they have graded out because they have not met yet. The yield is projected on that December first, fifteen thousand four seventy nine. This year it was thirteen thousand three fourteen, I believe.
Say it again, this year is.
It's thirteen three fourteen, but I.
That's definitely.
Actually, you know what, it's it's a stutter here. Yes, thirteen three fourteen. So again, so their their recommendation of having the yield at fifteen thousand four seventy nine is based on the assumption of education spending increasing by over eight percent. But that full sixty plus million dollar surplus being used to offset education spending. Concern is free meals. If they're going to continue that for next year, how are they going to fund that? It could potentially come out of that bucket of money. We don't know, but basically, I always use the information that they give us. So with with that dollar figure and the budget that I gave, went through today, offsetting revenues that will still be refined a bit and the equalized pupils. Pretty significant tax decrease for all towns because of that sharp increase in the property yields. Again, and he is not factored into this yet. So it it does look like good news, but I'm cautious. Because we know it's always a unknown until the legislature actually votes.
So there's not a scrap of what it's supposed to knock, don't we?
But yeah, so I mean, across the board, like seven and a half to eleven and a half since. This is Bennington, Powell, Shaftesbury and Woodford. With things just as I presented them today. I purposely did not include that in your packet. Again, so the other great out thing I have here is CLA posts have not been released by the tax department yet. So that'll be another factor that has to come into play along with Mount Anthony when they have the budget numbers I can refine that. So probably the next time we meet, I should have the CLAs and and you will have met at least once. So I'll have some some idea of what they're looking at.
So I mean, part of this looks great, and again, thank you, Renee, for all this, all this work that goes into this and being able to present it in such a clear way. I mean, one of the pieces that has me feeling really relieved about this is just under, just knowing all of the federal funds that will be going away that we're using to to prop up all of our student supports at this point. And so I I'm just so like yay for the short term, but I'm I'm nervous about what the next time around is going to look like. Particularly if there's a decrease now, it's not good, it's not going to be a decrease a few years from now.
And it'll look like a bigger increase than it would have been.
Yeah. So good, good, right now.
Right.
Would it be, Jim, would it be possible to get from Holly a breakdown of what these, what these projects would cost per school, just keeping in mind. Yeah, which which fund would be spending down?
Probably including the arts instead of.
Yeah, and instead of drawing it from the SVU ESD, you know, general reserve.
However, however, maybe based on that, exactly that point you brought up about the funds going away next year, maybe we leave those reserves and use them next year for facility updates and stuff like that. And put it in the budget this year.
But just, isn't it tough to not continually work on the facilities? Or are you saying it's not money?
Budget in like we, like Renee already did. Leave the reserve balances for each of those schools. And then next year, when we're going to have more facility things, use the reserve balances. So we have less money, more budgeting because of those S R things that will be going away and that we're going to need to budget in those items into the actual budget next year.
Yeah.
The other thing too, if you recall, here at this time, because we had such a significant unbalance, this board voted to take that money, eight hundred thousand dollars. So that money is there and set aside while we have done a chapter.
But the asset, we did it for that specific reason too, I feel like.
And the, and the way that we we formed or worded that ballot article is that that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in reserve now and this eight hundred that you've added to it is not specifically designated for facilities. It's for whatever the board decides is the best use. So it could be to to offset taxes. It could be, yeah, just offsetting revenue for the future. So there is that there as well.
So I would personally say, like, since we're looking at a decrease right now, I say let's leave the reserves.
Yep.
And budget it in and then potentially use that next year.
I like that idea, Chandler. And and also looking at what the the projected contract services are for this year, it's a it's a touch over a million. It's about eight hundred thousand, we'll go a long way into bolstering that up. I don't know, I, can you say offhand what, how much we're going to be no longer relevant state losing? How much, how much we're not going to be getting from the Feds any longer next cycle? And if you don't know, you don't know, I'm just, I'm wondering.
I I will look at those numbers so I can give you. It it's such an array of investments that we have between personnel and contracted services and supplies, you know, things that we're trying to do to to boost recovery, you know, in our student body. So I will take a look, but I I know we've been spending, you know, easily two and a half to three million dollars a year of that money and, you know, ramping up even more.
Okay, any, what other questions do we have?
The only other thing, like not to get hung up on the whole thing with the the math teacher. I just have a hard time having one school have a classroom teacher with a extra math teacher to teach the regular math. And then other schools have that teacher teaching the regular math and then have the interventionist helping for the tiered support. I guess I would be interested in understanding why necessarily that school, like what justifies that school. What are those potential S P A C scores or math scores that, what do those scores look like in that school versus the other schools? And is there another way to potentially give them what they're looking for? Is it like a tiered, are they looking, like what, I guess what is? Numbers and teachers, and is it equitable across all the schools?
No, it's not going to be, it's never going to be. The presentation to special education.
Absolutely.
And we also have programs in some schools that I'm in other schools, so you can then go by a total staffing number. And that gives them one school.
Yeah, I I have no concerns with that stuff. I guess it would just be that that structure is what kind of is jumping up red flags for me, like, and it's just like a math teacher for a specific school when those other grades in other schools don't have a math teacher. They have the interventionist. I would just be, would just be curious of what what that day looks like. What justifies it in that school versus not another school? And and if it is more to try to help with tier two and three, then do we need an interventionist versus and then have the classroom teacher teaching the tier one math? And then kind of utilizing it and you can potentially have that interventionist being shared amongst other schools. I don't know, that 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 would just be my concern. And just, that's the only thing that's popping out at me is that why is in one school there a math teacher?
And those interventionists are, they're tied to the the property levels at my school. So the high demand is that where we can allocate more interventions to there.
But even if that that teacher is not necessarily covered by that title money or that.
They are though, so each of them are kind of each in their own kind of style.
No, no, I I get that. I guess this, that this teacher would, maybe we can't call them an interventionist, but they wouldn't be necessarily doing the, they would be doing the tier two and tier three support as opposed to and having the classroom teacher doing the.
Yeah, that would be another question for that.
If that's, if that's how it's being allocated.
Right.
And then where's the accountability, accountability, she doesn't.
Personally, these answers.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm not asking the question now. I'm just saying that those are the questions that I think we need to get answered and that though, if you want to prepare him with those questions.
So checking out the time, Renee, what kind of, how many more, how many more readings of what is the time? What would the timing of the meeting people shuffle?
So things look pretty booked next weekend. I don't necessarily know that CLAs and I need Mount Anthony to meet, so probably after the first of the year. We do have to have the budget formed for the annual meeting no earlier than January twenty sixth and later than February fifth. So we do have the gift of time this year because that meeting is as late as it could be. Whereas last year was as early as it could be. So yeah, after, after the first, so even if I don't have my calendar up, but maybe even your regular meeting in December. I'm sorry, January.
So the ten.
Do we miss out if we ask?
Meet before.
Yeah, we'll warn it for 4:30. Maybe what we'll do is just move the warning for the regular meetings and just occur immediately at the conclusion of the budget meeting. Okay, so let's shoot for that point. So January 10th.
And we don't have a forum for our next meeting?
No, we don't. We need to close this video. It was amazing, it was. I mean, I, we need to close this very important information session. Turn the Zoom link up so I can open the other area.
I'll save somebody else's moment.
So for everyone joining us via Zoom or watching on CAT TV, thank you for joining us. We will have forum in about 15 to 20 minutes. We also have a stop point at seven when one of our board members has to leave, so we will no longer have forum. So what I'd like to do very quickly is just to informally, because we're not open right now, prioritize our agenda to go through the things we need to take action on so we can make sure to do those things within the hour-ish that we'll have. And then at that point, we'll have to close our meeting because we won't have forum. We can then figure out what's simply informational and what we need to hold off to a different date. So what I would like to do please, so we need to take action around the donation for the Gaga pit, which is super nice. So note, so agenda item four, we need action on policies we need to take action on, which is agenda item number six. Although we need to push that, we can push that. And we have the need for an executive session. So this is what I propose. And again, this is all informal right now because we're not open. I would like us to, we need to add the executive session, period. And then we will rearrange this agenda to allow us to do executive session, finance and policies first. And then we can pick up the rest of our agenda. And do as much as we can as an official meeting and then figure out what to do with the remainers. How does that strike everyone?
Does an executive session something mean after war?
Uh, no, what we can do, it's, it's, we're gonna add it as an agenda item, which as long as we do it first before we undertake any other action, then that's legit. That would be the same for any agenda item. Yeah, so the, for public application, the, you can add an agenda item to any agenda regardless of what the agenda item is, provided that you do it first before undertaking any of the items on the posted agenda.
And are we doing public comments and then executive?
Yes, let's do that. Yes, let's be sure to do public comments. Thank you for that. So this is my plan. Soon as Susan arrives, we will open the meeting. I'll ask for a motion to add the executive session. I don't know that we need it strictly speaking, but I'll ask for a motion anyway to make current agenda items. One, four, six, sorry, one, sorry, two, four, six, and the executive session to go first. And then we'll backfill the rest. So as long as that sounds right. I'm gonna ask the superintendent to put the meeting on mute again just so you don't overhear our small talk.
Should I, should I send them home? Could the ramp and do their presentation?
And I think that makes sense. Yeah, I thank you so much for coming, but because we're not sure, I would hate to see you.
There's a follow up to what, to what Sandy had asked that last meeting, you know, it's like on that data, but we'll do it another meeting. Because that, that's something that's gonna get changed.
So yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
And again, the principals report, or should we tell Donna to go?
I think we'll be able to have principals report. And Principal Colley, Principal Colley, what would you like? Do you want to hang? Hi, nice to see you. Do you want to hang out in the hopes that there is time to have your report during open meeting? Or would you like to give it to us later on?
So I don't have a problem being on the meeting only because I'm here till seven anyway.
Okay.
Conferences.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you so much. But if we get beyond seven.
We're not gonna format.
We're not gonna have a format for seven.
Donna, do you want to go do something and I will text you? I'll go do something, Donna.
Say that again?
Do you want to, well, I'll text you when we're gonna get to you so you don't have to sit in your office or what do you want to do?
Um, well, it's really okay because I'm actually looking at the camera. I like to watch the front door just to see who enters. So I'm okay with it being here.
Okay.
I'll keep myself busy.
Yes, D. I would like to take up two quick bits of business. I would entertain a motion to add an agenda item specifically for us to allow us to hold an executive session. This would be pursuant to one DSA subsection 313A1, sorry, A3 rather, with regard to the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee. Provided the public body shall make a final decision to hire or appoint a public officer or employee in an open meeting, shall explain the reason for its final decision during the open meeting. And 313A4. No, scratch that last part. Just the first one. So I would entertain a motion to have that executive session too. Chaela and Dick, thank you. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passes.
And can I ask you to have one more thing? It could be a quick item. Pummel base radio.
Say it again?
Pummel base radio.
Okay.
And action is needed.
On the finance section?
Uh, it would be under, sure, it could go under finance.
Okay, yeah. So I would entertain a motion to add pummel base radio to the finance section of the agenda. So those are the ones. Thank you, Dick. And thank you, Chaela. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adding pummel base radio to the finance agenda item, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Just raise your hand, you're all here. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes. And then finally, I'd like, I would entertain a motion to reorder the agenda to the following. Pledge of allegiance, public comments, finance, policies, executive session, consent agenda, principals report, superintendent's report, tiers report, FYI. I would entertain a motion to have that factored. Thank you, Chaela. Thank you, Dick. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Great. So the first agenda item is the pledge of allegiance. Now, ask everyone to stand. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the revolver for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. All right, agenda item two is public comments. Superintendent Culkeen, I see we have some folks here.
If they turn on their camera, then we can, we'll be able to know who's here. But I don't know if they want to speak.
So I'm seeing three screens. I see Principal Colley, I see Ms. Watson, I see Ms. Cross, and I see the conference room. So if there are others, please turn on your camera or you can use the little hand wavy icon. I see Ms. Brace. Oops, there's Ms. Brace. So of the two faces that I can see, Ms. Brace and Ms. Watson, would either of you like to make public comments?
Then you're free to turn.
Okay, I see someone B. Golden with the hand up. So B. Golden, the floor is yours, please. And if you would please start by identifying, by just sharing your name and the town in which you live, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not in a lit room, but it's, I'm Brittany Golden, school counselor from Bennington Elementary. I don't want to speak, I'm just observant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
My camera's not working, but I do have a comment.
Okay, please, Ms. Cross.
Okay, um, so I would like to bring attention to the incredibly unsafe learning environment that my son is stuck in at Molly Stark, I guess you could say. My son is a first grade student who is being removed along with his peers from his classroom, often multiple times a day due to circumstances beyond his control, which may sometimes include safety issues. I have requested an accumulated number of hours that my son has spent outside his classroom and I have been denied access to this both from a school administration standpoint and central office. I have not been asking for personal records, student names, or any legal matters. I've just requested a number with the number of days and hours that my son has spent not receiving direct instruction while in school. This matter has gone much further and my son's life has now been threatened by another student. That student has been allowed to remain in his classroom. I spoke with Mr. Culkeen about this earlier today. And as of right now, I have not received any further information from administration at Molly Stark, and that's concerning to me. My questions are what the policies and procedures are for students that threaten other students as I was not informed of this incident directly the day of it occurring. My son in return has retaliated and has began threatening manner himself, which again, I was not informed of this interfering with my ability to correct poor behaviors as his parent. I also would like to know what the procedure is to track the time students remain outside of their classroom. And if there's not currently a procedure for that information, should there be one in place? I believe parents have the right to know how much time their children are spent removed from their classroom throughout the school year. And I don't believe this should continue to be normalized and our children should no longer continue to be desensitized to traumatizing behaviors.
Okay, thank you. It's just, just, I guess as a, as a point of practice. So Ms. Cross, that the, the public comment section of the open meeting isn't necessarily for question and answer. With that said, I, I don't want to.
No, that's fine. I just, that's just what I want to bring to the table.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I would ask is this. What I'd like to do is, and I'll say it out loud, if you can write it down. What I'd like to do is, is give you my email address and I'm hoping maybe you and I can, can continue to have this conversation. If not through via email, at least maybe over the phone, but I at least want to start as a point of contact to give you my email address if I could, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to make sure I give it to you correctly. So it's Christopher, C-H-R-I-S-T-O-P-H-E-R dot Murphy, M-U-R-P-H-Y, at S-V-S-U.org.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public want to make comments during public comments? So Superintendent Culkeen, do folks have the ability to unmute themselves?
Yes.
Okay, so I would ask if anyone does, kind of last, last opportunity, if you do want to make public comment, please unmute yourself and sort of announce your presence, please. Okay, so hearing none, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is finance. Hold this up. So we have three bets. There's the treasurer's report, which was, I think I saw that was posted. Next, we have a potential donation to accept. This is a donation for something called a Gaga pit, which looks to be an outdoor. Yeah, it looks, it looks like a piece of playground spot to play in. And so Director Gordon's not with us, but it's pretty, it looks fun, sure. So I would entertain a motion to accept this $750 donation for the Gaga pit, please. Thank you, Chaela. Any discussion about accepting this donation?
Questions?
Sure.
And maybe this is for the support session. Is this, once this is in place, is this something that's part of something kids do at recess? Or is it part of something that the physical education teachers are? It's a Gaga ball, Gaga, the game is kind of like dodgeball. Except for it's in a pit. And it's been a lot of.
It's not a pit. It's a fenced off area.
Kind of thing. And, and the second piece, my second question is.
I know we have one at Shasberg, so when we have Jeff in, we can ask him that. Because I really don't know whether it's, I know the donation was being made, but I don't know if it's for Fizz Ed or.
And then the box, and with a box hockey, the box hockey that they currently have.
And I have no idea.
Okay.
Yeah, the photo looks like a dodgeball.
It is outdoors. It is outdoors. And it looks like it's about two and a half feet high in an octagon shape, you know?
So this brutal dodgeballing pit, this, we have a motion on the floor. Any, all in favor of accepting the donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that motion passes. And Superintendent Culkeen, can you bring us through the pummel base radio, please?
Back when Pummel had their own buses, the school had a base radio on the same frequency to which the town uses. Pummel's base radio has died in the past if the school would consider donating it to them. Has approximate value of $150 to $400, depending on the condition that it's in. I'd recommend that we donate it to the, there's no other, we have no need for it here. It's just sitting there. But I didn't want to just give it to the town without bringing it to the board. So I'd ask that you would donate the base radio that's at Pummel Elementary School to the town.
Sure, thank you for that. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Move to donate.
All right, move first and second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of donating the pummel base radio to the town of Pummel, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. It's now there. Okay, so that brings us to agenda item four, which are policies. So as you'll note on the agenda, there are three that are up, sorry, there are four that are up for adoption. These are policies that we've already discussed. So their policy is 1019, which is the nondiscriminatory mascots, it's whole branding policy. There's 5300, which regards the grievance protocol for students on five or four plans. I know that grievances with ADA compliance. There's an equity policy, which is 5510, and then there's a transgender and gender non-conforming students policy, which is 5520. So those have all been warned, we've discussed those here already. So I would entertain a motion to adopt all four of those policies, please.
Move to adopt.
Thank you, Dick. Thank you, Chaela. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting those four policies, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to the three that we have to warn. The first is 2200, hold that for myself, which contains a nondiscrimination policy. I mean, it specifically includes, well, as we will see with all of our policies as they come through, we need to add this district to some. Most of them need Arlington and Sandgate also added, so we'll see those. But here we have an update. It's, it's, it reflects the Civil Rights Act of 1964. One, zero, six, four, that was in there originally, so that needed to be changed. But just reflects the designation of the nondiscrimination, which regards no discrimination based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, marital status, gender identity, ancestry, place of birth, age, or mental or physical disability. And there are some updates to pronouns and, and addresses in there. So I would entertain a motion to warn this policy, please.
So move.
We'll call it, Chaela and Dick. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of warning draft policy 2200, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next, we're on to draft policy 5087, which is threats or disruptions to school officials. Here we go. So again, we have the addition of those districts that are joining us. And then down on page two, line 37. It just, it just tightens up the language a little bit to clarify that if a suspension makes the 10 school days, a school board hearing must be conducted within the 10 school days for the precipitating action. Again, just tightens that up. And down below on page three and page four, we have some further tightening up of the language. So, so there it is. So I would entertain a motion to warn this policy 5087, please. Dick and Chaela, any discussion on warning that policy? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of warning that policy, please signify by saying aye. Any abstentions? I'm sorry, any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion carries. And then last one to warn tonight is draft policy 5405, which is the Pedro Intervention, begins with adding Arlington and Sandgate. It then goes on to reference state board of education rules, which were not in there to begin with. In part, what that allows us to do is to, allows this policy to keep pace with changes in the state board of ed without us having to come back and change the policy each time. And then it also, there are also additions to, or some adjustments of pronouns within the policy itself. So I would entertain a motion to warn draft policy 5405, please. Thank you, Dick. Chaela, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of warning policy 5405, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion passes as well. Thank you very much. So moving on to our next agenda item, which is the executive session. So I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session as discussed at the beginning of this meeting.
You invite in the superintendent and the director of student support services.
Yes, please. So calling into executive session with those two in, in fact, as well. So we have a first and a second. So we have a first and a second, any discussion about this executive session? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of entering into executive session as described, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, we are now in executive session.
Yeah, move everyone to waiting room.
Thank you. Hi, Principal Colley, how are you? Thank you very much for, for hanging out and waiting, um, we were, we are not gonna be able to get to your report tonight, though, um, so, so good luck with your, with your conferences, thank you very much. It said we need to jump into superintendent's report, uh, for a quick bit of action that the board needs to take, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Donovan.
All right, so looking to the superintendents.
Thank you. I would like, um, permission from this board, um, to explore the reuse of the Beach Street School, the former central office, uh, to be used as a intervention site, um, for reference points similar to On Point. Uh, we have a capacity problem at On Point. We have had the building commissioner of Bennington, uh, tour the site with the S V S U director of facilities, uh, for a small amount of money. We believe we can bring the main floor of the building up. The bottom floor cannot be used for students, it can only be used for storage, but, uh, we can bring the main floor up, and our goal would be to get this operational sometime in January, uh, but the building is owned by this building, by this board, so we'd like, we would come back, another meeting with specific plans and, and, and a vote, but I didn't want to explore it further without, um, the authority of the board to do so.
So I would entertain a motion to authorize superintendent and his desk need to explore reuse of the Beach Street property as described.
We'll grant that.
I'll call it first with Chaela, and second with Dick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And briefly for the chair report, uh, we are gonna have several vacancies for this board coming up, um, and filing deadline is the end of January. So if any of you know anyone, or if anyone listening, or watching on CAT TV, uh, want an opportunity to serve your community and hopefully make a difference and make things better, uh, that's the way to do it. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Okay, let me get Susan's turn. What do you have to say about that? And a second from Sandy Colker, any discussion?